Good evening. Welcome to the August 11th of City Council meeting. If you're inclined, please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Aiken, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen. Chief, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before the meeting begins, I'll review the guidelines. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. During public meetings, hearings, all questions and statements from the public should be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments, the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. During the non-agenda public comment section, each speaker has three minutes and can only speak once. We now move to additions and deletions to the agenda. I recognize Mayor Protem Edgerado for this.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I guess you're the guys who have boats that could get here through all of the rain. What a month we're having. It's been a month off for us, so we're all happy to get back to it and get the business done of the city. We do not have any additions or deletions to our agenda tonight, so Mayor, I present the agenda as written as a motion.
The minutes were provided to council for review prior to the meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I approve.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion and a second from Councilwoman Price. Any comments or changes? All in favor? Thank you. We have no presentations tonight, so we will now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of thirty minutes. I would like to call Dr. Rose Hayes first because she has provided me with her three-minute comments. Three minutes, yes. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As Mayor Milner said, I am Dr. Rose Hayes and I live at 616 Colleton Avenue Southeast. Before retiring and moving to Aiken, I served as a federal Public Health and Safety Officer for twenty years. I also served as an expert witness for U.S. Attorneys in the Justice Department. Since the city of Aiken has responsibility for safety and health of citizens using their avenues, I want to take the opportunity to point out some of the safety and health issues I have seen along Colleton Avenue and its side streets on a daily basis. Although Colleton is not a throughway, non-local traffic is increasing, including large trucks, both permanent, commercial and personal, and cars, which are increasingly ignoring the speed limit. And we also have motorcycles speeding along Colleton, doing tricks like, I think they call it wheelies. Even though Colleton is a state-maintained roadway, it serves as a city promenade with greenways that are part of our city arboretum. During the COVID epidemic, foot traffic dramatically increased as people realized they could park at the library and then walk the promenade on Colleton for exercise and for recreation. This activity is certainly to be encouraged because of the health benefits to that. Designed in the 1830s, there are few sidewalks on the Colleton Loop. The street is shared by growing numbers of pedestrians who walk, jog, push baby carriages, and exercise leash dogs. Some ride horses, some are in horse-drawn golf carts, and golf carts are increasing on the street, carrying children. Thrown into this mix is slower-moving vehicles, which intermittently stop to read the little signs at the bottom of the arboretum city trees. In addition, many residents and visitors walk and drive the promenade to admire the old winter colony homes along Colleton and its side streets. These factors individually and collectively create safety hazards and the potential for legal action against the city. For the safety and health of people using Colleton and its side streets, I recommend implementing, posting, and monitoring a fifteen mile-an-hour speed law, just as the city has done for the Horse District. Thank you for your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can, if you have any.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Kurt Johnson, 114 Brewster Way, Aiken, South Carolina. First of all, I want to thank the pastors and organizations and the city that showed up for our luncheon last week. It brought a lot of things together, and we're starting to get more of that in the city, a lot more working together. We've still got a problem with people on the streets, we know that. We're working with the Police Department to kind of clean up the parks so that they're not staying in the parks later than they're supposed to. Some of the other things that we've got going on, we have been selected to be an organization that is going to do what they call a recovery ride. This is where people are getting out of jail or just have appointments. They might be in sober living houses. We are going to pick them up, we'll have drivers available for it, take them to their appointments, and bring them back. So this is one big thing for us, so that we're not always depending on the city bus, which is, you know, you might be stuck someplace for two hours, and you might have another appointment. So this is another way that we're trying to alleviate some of the problems. One of the big things that we did see this last month is we had over 256 overdoses last month. That's not just fentanyl or heroin, but it's overdoses. We had two fatalities, one's too many, in my case. But we are desperately working on that and working hard. We've got the churches, they're starting to carry the Narcan in their cars. Anybody needs Narcan, it's there, it's available, we can get it. And it's not something that you shouldn't have because, you know, it's the society we live in today. So that's another thing that we've got going on. For the people, we've got what they call convoy of hope. It's an eighteen-wheeler that comes into town. And we're getting organizations together to have them come unload the eighteen-wheeler, and they take what's on the truck. So they might get a pallet, churches, organizations, anybody. And I'll put it out on the website for that as well. So I think that's all I've got. Welcome back, everybody. Have a good day.
I do have a question. Two-hundred-and-fifty overdoses?
Yes, ma'am, that's in Aiken County. Over fifteen, almost fifteen-hundred for the year so far.
Wow.
Yep.
Thank you.
Pastor, I would like to thank you for participating in our Healthcare for the Homeless Day and thank the city for allowing us to use Giles Park. I understand we fed a hundred-and-fifty people that day.
Wow, that is awesome.
And had so much valuable information and resources available to all that came. And it was so nice to see them coming out.
Yes, ma'am.
Usually, we don't have a large crowd of homeless people coming out for the event, but this year was different. And I just thank y'all for participating.
No problem. It was our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Lex Berry, 1526 South Boundary Avenue Southeast, pastor of C4 Impact. I just wanted to take a moment to address the concern that members of our community have with transitional housing and like the bridge housing that we're doing. What I want everyone to understand is to understand our heart. We are looking out for the entire community. It's not just those who are on the street or those who are trying to prevent themselves from getting, becoming homeless and so forth, but we're looking at the entire community here. Nobody wants to see, and I've heard it and I've seen it on social media and things like that, a concern about, well, my property value and things like that are going down. We don't want anybody's property value to go down. We don't want anybody to be in fear, okay? We are helping people every single day, and it's not just drugs and alcohol, which is just a symptom, by the way. It's not the cause of homelessness, it's a symptom. People are trying to escape. They don't want to be in the position that they're in, and they're making bad choices to escape the situation. That's not going to do that. It's not going to, they're not going to escape from it, of course, but they're in survival mode. It's whatever they can do in order to cope, but that's why we're here. And for those who can't, we are there to be your representative. Look at us as your liaison, you know, to walk out. We are asking for your support. So we continue to bring people in and show them that the community does care, we do love you. We have taken the training in order to handle situations where people, even if they have mental illnesses and things like that, we've been trained to do those things, mental health first aid and things like that. We actively keep training to do these things. So we're there on your behalf, trying to help, but understand, there's nothing to fear. There's nothing to fear. We go out, these are individuals who are members of our community, okay? We're not there to create transitional homes and so forth in order to lock them in. We're there to give them the help and love and support that they need to get on their feet, then move on. And we are requiring everybody to put skin in the game. We're not just saying, hey, you just come on in and just, you know, no, we're saying, are you committed to improving your situation? And this is what it's going to require. Yes, you have to work. Yes, you have to show that you are trying to improve. You have to make a budget plan. You have to do all these things that we have to do every single day. But I can tell you, we can throw resources all day long at every individual out there who needs the help, but if we don't take the time to show them how to use the resources, you're just throwing good money after bad. That's why we're there, and that's why we continue to ask for your support, and we appreciate everything that you're doing, City Council. You've been wonderful. We ask you to continue to do so. We're in it for the long haul, okay? We can't just sit back and do nothing, because if we do, it's just going to get worse. But the efforts that we're making, we are seeing a difference. We are seeing people get on their feet. We are seeing people change their, having their minds renewed to what they have to do. And the most wonderful thing is they are seeing a light at the end of the tunnel. They're saying, okay, there is a pathway. There's a pathway other than, and maybe drugs, alcohol, or trying to do something desperate, or just, hey, you know what, there's no other better choice for me than to just live in a motel. They see that there is a choice, and there is a better way. Aiken, we can do better. We can be the light for the entire state if we choose to. The resources are here, the creativity is here, the knowledge is here. Let us put it to work, and let's work together to solve our homeless issue here. It's not going to go away, but we can fix it if we put the effort in as a community. So thank you again for all your help.
You bet. Anyone else? Yeah, Jacob, and then you're next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Jacob Ellis, Aiken, South Carolina. I'd just like to mention that whoever in the community missed out on the tiny home community meeting held at St. John's really missed out on a heartfelt plea for help in the homeless communities. We had Pastor Kurt and Pastor Lex there. I saw some of the council and mayor there. But really, we as a community need to be encouraging our state leaders, our government leaders to come together and get this going because, like Pastor Lex just passionately said, we could be a beacon for the state. We could be the roadmap for this phenomenal project. I know several areas throughout the state already have one. Columbia has a rapid shelter, is what they call theirs, and theirs is just flourishing right now. My aunt, before she moved back to Aiken, used to donate and volunteer regularly for the rapid shelter. It needs to come to Aiken. Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the back.
Good evening. I'm Aaron Frazier. I live on 549 Chesterfield, up north, right, that street. I've got a few issues that I need to address. I'm trying to figure out why is our water bill study raising, the rates of our water bill study going up, and that water's still dirty? And also, like, why are the trees not being cut back from the road? Like, you've got to drive up past the stop sign just to see what's coming. Like, the sidewalks are not being cut, and like, I'm getting poked in the eye just riding a bicycle down the sidewalk. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
I have a question to ask. Are you talking about specific locations in mine?
It's like Chesterfield and Hampton, mainly that road that's not being cut.
Okay.
And then another thing, the sprinkler system's not set up right. It's like watering the people instead of the grass, so.
Right. Well, it's interesting you bring that up because I received two phone calls today regarding the appearance in that area, so thank you for coming to share that information.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
May I make a comment, please?
Of course.
And I want to thank Lex and Pastor Kirk as well, both pastors, for bringing some things. At that meeting at St. John's, we heard from folks that we don't normally hear from. Great attendance, I thought, and diverse, very diverse input. But what was also very obvious was the fact that District Two, of which I represent, is where tiny homes has been recommended to start with eleven units. Folks, and Lex, the homes that you have on Greenville Street is in my district as well. So the criticism that I've been getting is, why is everything going into District Two? And that is not the case. It was well-described. They're going at other locations in this town. So for folks to say that the city is only looking at one place to place homeless folks is not the real deal. There were, it was very, very clear that they're in places that you have no idea would accept the homeless coalition, I'm sorry, the homelessness, that those folks who do not have houses, they're in locations that you would not fancy they would be. And well-accepted, the fear is obvious based on the people living next door to these homeless folks in very expensive houses, that they do not have fear of these individuals. So I just wanted to make that obvious to folks that all folks in Aiken are not afraid to live next door to homeless individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lacy. We now move to approval and discussion of appointees to various city boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you. We do not have any appointments for consideration this evening.
Okay, thank you. Are there any nominations to consider at our next meeting?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Gary Yant to the Community Development Committee and also Victor Teis to the Recreation Commission.
Thank you. I would like to appoint, reappoint Caroline Gwynn for the, is that right, Arts Commission. Anyone else? Thank you. Next, we have second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the city code to allow consent agendas for council meetings. Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you. This is an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 2-64, Paragraph Four and Paragraph Five of the Aiken City Code to Allow Consent Agendas for Council Meetings." We've had discussion about this on several occasions here recently, and there's been discussions about this over the years. When used properly, it can increase, be a tool to increase efficiency of council meetings for routine or so-called non-controversial items. If council desires to... If council desires to incorporate a consent agenda, uh, item on the city council agenda, we need to amend those sections I just described in the title of the ordinance. We went through in detail at the last meeting what that would mean. What we would typically do is, um, have consent agenda items that are, um, non-controversial, and typically those are, uh, first, they have to be unanimously approved on first reading. These, uh, routine annexations that we have. If it involves a concept plan, that would not be part of a consent agenda, that particular item. As an example, what we did in the memos today, um, in New Business, if you noticed, uh, we noted if council approves a consent agenda, uh, we would put in the cover memo whether or not, or we would put in the cover memo that it would be up potent, on a consent agenda, should it pass unanimously. In the agenda packet, we added some things, uh, that I hope, um, was beneficial to council. On page 52 of the packet, we have, uh, our process assuming council approval that we would do, uh, online, and, uh, on our website, uh, we would put on a online form for requests. Uh, we would, um, have a, we described the process we would have at council meetings. We, uh, also will continue to inform via social media after August 25th, these, um, this, this new consent agenda. We have a flyer sample on page 53. We have a sample of what the agenda outline might look like, or the, or the general agenda on pages 54 through 56. We took the July 14th agenda, which was our last meeting that we had, and pretended that we had a consent agenda then, and as you noticed, we put on multiple annexations. But we left off the consent agenda, a rezoning of Rose Hill. And we did not include, uh, the textile tax credits that the, uh, property by the farmer's market was seeking, nor did we have the annexing of, uh, Thoroughbred Run and Zone It Plan Residential. So, again, we wanted to show you how that would work. The online form, uh, we would have it available with a link, uh, to, it would be available, our online form on Thursday, before, when the agenda is published, so folks could know what's on the agenda. Submit it. They would have until 2:00 PM on the day of the meeting, uh, and again, that was just a, uh, a, something to start conversation. If council would rather move that time, that's fine, but, uh, the online form would be available until 2:00 PM. We would have, and that's a sample of what the on, if you could go back one page, that is what the form online would look like. It would have dropdowns with all the agenda items that are on consent agenda, that someone could fi, uh, submit a request and say, I don't want this on consent agenda. Then if you go to the next slide now, uh, Ms. Wrightout, it shows, uh, the sample form we would have for men and, or, or citizens that attend our meetings could fill out, uh, why, what, what item they would like removed from the consent agenda, uh, and turn that into the clerk. And also, we have a sample of the legal ad, that, uh, we run a legal ad before every council meeting. We have to run it twice. And if you could go back several pages, Ms. Wrightout, to show what the legal ad that we run looks like. Uh, we highlighted in yellow, um, that, uh, the, the new verbiage that we have on the consent agenda, and we list those. Again, this is a sample of the July, uh, 14th meeting. We, uh, prepared that. This did not run in the paper. This is just a sample for you to look at what it would look like. So, that being said, uh, we have put that, uh, socialization together for you of, of how we will, uh, m- market this and get it out to the public. As it stands now, the way the ordinance is written, and the city attorney could correct me, this would go into effect at the next meeting. Or, unless council wants to change that, should council want this to pass. Looking at tonight's agenda, um, what I would envision, uh, assuming that all these items pass unanimously under New Business, I would assume that Items Two through Six would go on a consent agenda, which are all annexations. And, uh, but Item One, under New Business, and Items Seven and Eight and Nine would not go on consent agenda. Again, uh, we would be very, uh, show a lot of discretion and restraint in using the consent agenda. So, that is, uh, before council, this, uh, ordinance amending the code section. It is, uh, before you this evening for second reading, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to, um, amend the city code?
Madam Mayor, I so move.
That would be Councilwoman, um, Broll. And Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Walt Second. Are there any comments from the public? Yes, sir. Hi, Jensen, how are you?
I'm tired of y'all coming at me. I'm supposed to be back, and for most of you, I think all of you know, I just welcomed my first child on July 5th. Happy young, uh, young man named Atticus Xavier Jennings, and he's, he's a, my joy, but I am exhausted. No, so actually, I am actually not here to be against the, um, consent agenda item, but I just was thinking about some potential ideas for accommodations. I don't know if you, I saw an electronic version of being able to, uh, submit a form. Now, because we do have, uh, a well-seasoned populace, if you will, a, a large well-seasoned populace, they may not be so, and, uh, electronic, uh, uh, they might not be as technologically inclined as some of us may be, but I do know an 85-year-old who's better at technology than I am, so age may not be the issue. But just to follow on that, I didn't see that in presentation, if there was like a physical, um, um, form, so I thought that might be helpful. Also, I was wondering if y'all would consider making an amendment to giving a 48-hour, uh, timeframe. Uh, I think a little bit more time could be good. Uh, it, it, it kind of is a more of a compromise, if you will, because you have, the citizenry has a little bit more time to look at something that might seem mundane to y'all, but I saw one of the items, which was five, was grants. Now, I don't know about all of you, but in my current job, I work for a nonprofit, we deal with grants. And the funding, suffice it to say, over the last six months has been insane. But, um, just wanting to make sure that, um, if something like that came up, somebody would have the time to have read through that. Uh, and I just suppose it could be the same with the zoning as well. But just some thoughts that I had, and I thought I wanted to share with y'all, um, and I thank you all for all that you do, and, um, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Yes, congratulations.
And then the, uh, council, yes, members of the public, and I did fail to mention, there's nothing, uh, i- it's noted in the agenda, members of the public can make a request to their count, to a council person or the mayor, and ask to have a consent agenda item removed. We would put this out four days before the council meeting, um, when the, the agenda goes live, before 5:00 on Thursday, before a Monday meeting. So that is when the, uh, when the, when, again, until we know what's on the consent agenda, there's really, we can't speculate. So, at that point, once the agenda is issued, is when the documents would be available for the public. So there is four days, um, of, of, uh, public scrutiny, um, that can, um, that can be utilized.
Yeah, I just think it's kind of like a leak in there, so I'm like, not saying that, you know, myself, and I'm not, shoot, I'll take it. Both of us are nerds. We'll be the items of leg, uh, legislation. That's kind of what we get paid, or I get paid to do. But, um, you know, just, just, the, the layman may not do that. So I just, just something, but I, like I said, I appreciate it, and I, and your answer was sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, if I may add to what our city manager said. We also put a caveat in there that the, the night of the meeting, like tonight, until the gavel comes down, anyone in the audience can fill out that form and get it to Ms. Sarah, and that item gets pulled off the agenda. So if for some reason you don't make it, see it the four days beforehand, you can come that night and still have it pulled off, and it can be discussed. So we tried our very best to make sure public had input into this. You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else?
And, and also too, the, I know, uh, Mr. Jennings was talking about, uh, grants and such. I guess initially, and again, uh, I guess we'll see, i- should this pass, how this might play out. Items that involve matters of funding would not be on a consent agenda. Um, I know we talked about, we get some small grants from like, uh, Department of Environmental Services for recycling and such, but pretty much for the most part, um, all items involving expenditure of funds would, would not go on a consent agenda.
Any other comments from the public? Comments from council? Um, all those in favor, then? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. We now move to New Business. We have several items tonight, and the first item is first reading of an ordinance authorizing the City of Aiken to waive its right of first refusal to property in Vereen's Industrial Park. Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing the City of Aiken to waive its right of first refusal in the property owned by Avara Management Services LLC and located in Aiken Airport Industrial Park, now known as Vereen's Industrial Park. Any property in, in the, uh, any property located inside the, uh, industrial park here is, um, that is privately owned, that is privately owned, whenever the property changes hands per the covenants of the industrial park, the city has a right of first refusal to purchase back. We have on the screen three parcels totaling about 44.4 acres. I guess the one marked number one for years was Beecham GlaxoSmithKline Last Avara, a pharmaceutical plant. Uh, it has been empty. Avera closed several years ago, and they have a option to, or, excuse me, they are in discussions with a firm, uh, to sell the property known as Nicotine Plus LLC. Again, we, uh, this comes up periodically. We have to, per those rules, waive the right of first refusal. That is all we're doing tonight, and, um, we have reviewed the request, um, and recommend waiving the right to, our right to purchase that property back from, um, Avara Management Services. This is before council for first reading this evening, and I believe, uh, Molly Campalong, uh, who represents the potential buyer, is here, uh, to answer any questions that might, uh, come up. Um, she's with Robinson Gray of Columbia.
Hi, yes, I'm happy to answer any questions, should anyone have any. Yes, ma'am.
You're representing Nicotine LLC?
Nicotine Plus LLC.
Who is that?
Uh, they are based out of Maryland, and they, um, do, uh, flavored tobacco and nicotine products. Um, that's consistent with the prior use. There was nicotine being manufactured at the Avara facility, and so it would be a similar use to what was priorly done.
Thank you. Uh, the motion, I, may I have a motion, please, to, uh, for this ordinance?
So moved.
Uh, Councilman, um, Jeridow, and the second?
The second.
The second from, um, Councilwoman Gregory. Uh, any comments from the public? Uh, comments, any, anyone else want to speak about from the council?
Well, for the record, can you explain to the audience what Nicotine Plus will do in that?
Yes, so they'll be doing, um, flavored tobacco.
Lost with that, yes.
Sure, I'm. Yeah, so. Sure, yeah, I'm local real estate council, but I can provide what I can. Um, so they're based in Maryland, but they are going to be doing, um, uh, flavored tobacco to go into edible tobacco, and so they're gonna be selling to the tobacco suppliers, um, but, to the, um, you know, that, for example, if it were Juul, they would be selling to the Juul. I, I am not sure, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm their local real estate council.
So are you, this is for the manufacturer there. You're not gonna be selling it to?
Exactly, it's a manufacturing facility.
Okay.
And how many folks will be working in the facility? You, you don't know. You, you're just trying to sell the property. It's interesting that we have this, um, request, but don't know, I don't know personally what I'm approving.
Sure.
We're, we're waiving our right, again, all we're doing is, uh, per the, um, per the covenants of the industrial park, um, and we've done this before. We, um, have to waive our right of first refusal to buy back property whenever someone wants to sell. So what we're doing tonight is just saying, we do not want to exercise our right of first refusal and purchase the property back from Avara Management LLC.
I would also add that the property has been vacant for three years, but Avara was using, Avara was producing nicotine products in the facility prior to shutting down. And so if, when my client purchases the property, they're gonna be doing significant work to improve the way, uh, the manufacturing facility. For example, I think the roof has to be completely replaced, so it really will be a betterment to the actual property itself.
I was just curious about the product, but I'm fine with it.
Oh, thanks. Thank you. Thank you so much for your help. So, um, may I have the, uh, a, a hand, hand vote for the, all those in favor, please?
Did we, did we move you in favor?
Yes. Did I, do I see?
I will approve this on first reading, but I'm still not comfortable. I want that on the record in terms of what I'm approving. We've got enough problems, uh, to magnify these things, and although it is a manufacturing shipping, I'm wondering about why we're not involved in technology and all those other things and trying to recruit those, uh, those job skills other than tobacco, but.
Thank you.
I'll approve it on the first reading.
Uh, Mayor, if I may, the, um, uh, the county, I believe the county has already looked at this, and the county has determined that this use qualifies under its zoning ordinance as an appropriate use in the county, and they're the ones who determine whether that's appropriate. I have reviewed the covenants and restrictions, and the restrictions, and they're old, and, and they're not very good. And I'm not su, I'm sure a qualified real estate lawyer like yourself would agree with me. It's, um, the enforceability of them are, is questionable, because they're so old, and they're, and they're kind of random. But, um, um, the, the uses that are allowed in that park would, would fall under this purview. I mean, this, this use would, would be allowed under the restrictive covenants of the, of the park.
Again, I'm approving this with dis- discomfort, and I will wait until the second reason to try to get some more information. And I understand you're just doing your job as a realtor to sell the property, so.
And, and Mayor, basically, like Gary's pointed out, Mr. Smith, they're antiquated. If we decided to exercise the option to buy it, we'd be under the obligation to buy all of this ourselves and own it, which we don't own at this particular point in time, so we certainly don't want to do that.
It's the first right of refusal. I was around when that was all done.
Right.
I'm, I'm not questioning the first right of refusal.
Right, and the fact of, we wouldn't be involved in the county, this being in the county, not necessarily in the city. We just have the right to buy it if we want. We just have the right to buy it if we want it, which we did experience some of that up in front of the terminal.
Yeah.
With that property. That fell under that, and we decided we'd rather keep it or whatever we came to on that. But again, it makes sense, we don't want to buy it, the county has vetted this, and I think we're safe.
And I trust you.
Thank you.
But nevertheless, I have to have a comfort level as well, so.
That's fine. And just for the sake of the public, this would be the second company, and again, I was curious about those parameters, doing somewhat the same thing in the same.
Location.
Location.
And it just may happen to fall in my district, so I don't, so I have to be certain, anyway.
Nothing wrong with that. Okay, so we all voted in favor, as far as I know?
Yes.
And you noted Councilwoman Price's reservation, maybe?
It's a reservation, but I'm approving it on the first, this is just the first reading, and I'll do my homework.
Price's reservations. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 117 Linwood Drive and zone it RS-15 residential single family. Mr. Beeden.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to annex property located at 117 Linwood Drive and zone the same RS-15 residential single family. The applicants have requested this annexation of approximately thirty-nine hundredths of an acre. We're recommending it zone RS-15, which is consistent with surrounding uses and zoning. It is in the Pinehurst subdivision. All those present at the, or excuse me, the planning commission unanimously recommended it be annexed and zoned RS-15. If, and as noted in the last sentence of the memo, if this item is unanimously approved by council on first reading, it will be placed on the consent agenda for August 25th, 2025.
So this is the very first precedent, if this turns out right?
Yes, if it, if council passes it unanimously, we will, we would put this on the consent agenda August 25th.
And we'll give them a plaque at 117 Linwood Drive?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, you can't give them a plaque without giving the other ones.
Every one of those.
Is there a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I move, this is in my district, and as we talked about several of these, are closing up doughnut holes, which is a good thing for our city, so I move that we.
Councilwoman Broll made the motion, and I'll have a second, please?
Second.
From Councilwoman Gregory. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. The third item is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance annexed 2018 Pine Log Road and zoned it RS-15 residential single family. Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you. It is an ordinance to annex property located at 2018 Pine Log Road and zone the same RS-18, RS-15. This property is approximately sixty-nine hundredths of an acre. The requested zoning is consistent with surrounding single family uses and zoning. The planning commission at their July 15th meeting unanimously recommended annexing and zoning RS-15. This too, should it be unanimously approved tonight on first reading, will be placed on the consent agenda August 25th.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this? Would you?
I'll do it again.
Okay, Councilwoman Broll made the motion, and a second I need.
I second.
Please, Councilwoman Diggs made the second motion. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous?
It's unfair, she's getting all of them.
I know. The next item is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex a lot off of Boardman Road and zoned it RS-15. Mr. Beeden.
Thank you. It is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to annex property located at Boardman Road Southeast and zoned the same residential single family RS-15. It's approximately seventeen hundredths of an acre. RS-15 is the recommended zoning, as it is consistent with surrounding single family uses and types. The planning commission unanimously recommended annexing and zoning RS-15 at their July 15th meeting. If this item is unanimously approved tonight on first reading, it will be placed on the consent agenda for August 25th.
Is that your area as well?
That's it, that's Councilwoman Waltz's area.
Is there a motion, please?
Pardon?
Councilman?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, what did you say?
I need a motion, please, for this?
It's in your district, it's in your district.
I gave a motion.
Thank you.
I dig.
And a second from?
I second.
From Councilman Jerido, seconded, Councilman Waltz made the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? In favor? Motion passed unanimously. Next, we have first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 1450 Richland Avenue East and zone it general business.
Thank you. It is an ordinance to annex certain property located at 1450 Richland Avenue East and zone the same general business GB. This is approximately seventy-one hundredths of an acre. The proposed zoning is consistent with surrounding commercial uses in the current zoning designation. Those present at the July 15th planning commission meeting unanimously recommended annexing and zoning it general business. If this item is unanimously approved by council on first reading, it will be placed on the consent agenda August 25th.
Thank you. Is there a motion, please?
That's my district, and I make the motion.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion, and a second from?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price made the second motion. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Thank you. The next item is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex two parcels on Oak Grove Road owned by the City of Aiken and zone them general business. Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you. It is a first reading of an ordinance to annex property located on Oak Grove Road and is on the same GB general business. This is two parcels. Parcel Track Day is four tenths of an acre, Track B is thirty-six hundredths of an acre. It is compatible with adjacent zoning, the GB designation. The city acquired this when we purchased the trailer park as part of our efforts to acquire property for phase one of the Powder House Connector. The planning commission unanimously recommended it be annexed and zoned GB. It is before you for first reading. If this item is unanimously approved by council on first reading this evening, it will be placed on the consent agenda for August 25th.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
Councilman Jerido. And a second from?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. The next item under new business is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for signage waivers for the public shopping center on Silver Bluff Road. Mr. Beeden.
Thank, thank you. It is an ordinance amending the concept plan for property located at the intersection of Village Green and Silver Bluff. The applicant on behalf of Woodside Aiken Peach LLC is requesting signage waivers. The waivers to the sign ordinance restrictions in section 4.4.7, paragraph B, limiting freestanding signs to one per lot, and in section 4.4.11, limiting signs to fifty square feet, they are proposing that the primary shopping center sign be on Silver Bluff Road with an additional freestanding sign on Village Green Boulevard. In the PR district, the sign ordinance calls for signs to be permitted with a maximum fifty foot sign size and eleven foot sign height on two-lane roads. Section 4.4.7C states that the structure supporting a ground-level freestanding monument sign shall not be included in calculating the area of the sign. Sign illustrations provided show additional verbiage on the supporting column, which makes this combined sign area over the maximum fifty square feet. No elements of the previously approved concept plan are changing since last considered by city council. The planning commission reviewed the signage waivers at their July 15th meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the request for additional signage with the following conditions. Number one, that the waiver is granted to the sign ordinance restriction in 4.4.7B, limiting freestanding signs to one per lot. Two, that the waiver is declined to section 4.4.11, limiting such signs to fifty square feet. And three, that the applicant shall provide proof of approval by the Village Architectural Review Board prior to issuance of a signed permit. And this is before you on first reading this evening, and this would not go on the, a consent agenda for second reading, since it is an amendment to a concept plan.
Very good. Is there a motion for this ordinance, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price? And a second?
I'll second.
From Councilman Jerido. Comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Brad Chell with Woodside Aiken Peach LLC. I don't necessarily have any comments, but wanted to answer any questions y'all may have, and additionally point out that the sign that's being shown here is not the sign at issue. That's the main sign on Silver Bluff Road, and the sign we're seeking, I guess the additional approval for, is the one alongside Village Green Boulevard. It's significantly smaller than that. That's the one, and Silver Bluff, I think, is a four or five-lane road in that spot. So the fifty feet and height requirements don't necessarily apply in the same way to that sign. I think further on in the package, the actual sign being proposed is there too, if anyone is interested in that. And like I said, happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
I think it's one page down, one page forwards, page 144, 145?
Anyone have any question?
It's actually on 152, I believe.
That's what I thought.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Keep going. There it is.
That one's actually the revised sign, so it is in compliance with what's on the screen right now.
I guess, repeat the public if they have any questions.
And now the council.
Or does?
Unless, do we have any questions?
All right, thanks y'all.
Thank you. Do you, comments from council? Oh, I thought he was from the public. Oh, but he's, oh, I thought, sorry. Any comments from the public, other than the gentleman?
Yes, that's what I was asking.
Comments from council? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you. He's gone, yeah. Okay, the next item is first reading and public hearing of an amendment to the city's business license ordinance.
Thank you. This is an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the City of Aiken to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. We have a Business License and Standardization Act that requires every municipality with a business license tax to update its business licensing tax schedule by December 31st every odd numbered year. It is time for us to consider an update for the business license year starting, yeah, he's recusing himself.
Yeah, he's recusing himself.
May, May 1st, 2026 through April 30th, 2027. We are required to update the class schedule in Appendix B of our current business license ordinance. Here's kind of what's confusing. Exhibit A is Appendix B, so on page 158 of the, of the agenda packet, it has exhibit Appendix B. That shows, this is due to a change in the NACs codes update that the IRS provides us, that's the North American Industry Classification Codes. With these classification changes, we would see business license revenue decrease by approximately $173,000. So one of the things to, for council's consideration would be amending Appendix A, which is Exhibit B. And we apologize for the confusion, but if you look on page 164 of the, of the agenda, we would recommend increasing the rate per thousand dollars in gross receipts from which most current business license fees are generated, increase that by five cents per $1,000 or fraction thereof, which would bring us closer to the revenue neutrality, because again, these NACs reclassification would drop the, drop the revenue by about $173,000. So this is before council for first reading. So essentially, the, just to put it in perspective, Exhibit A, Appendix B, that has to be adopted in order to continue with the business license. That just updates the NACs codes update as required by the South Carolina Business License and Standardization Act. What we are mentioning, because I know city council, we try to keep revenues stable, not increase, by adjusting Appendix A, which is Exhibit B, he, we would increase those by five cents per 1,000. So this is before you for first reading this evening.
I so move, Madam Mayor.
I second.
Sorry, Councilwoman Gregory seconded the motion, thank you. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? It's unanimous, minus Councilman Waltz is out of the room. Will you, someone go get him? Oh, Lex will go get him. Okay, the final item under, I'll wait till he comes back. The final item under new business is first reading of an ordinance to enter, an intergovernmental agreement with Aiken County regarding the Powder House Connector project.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing the City of Aiken to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Aiken County for the purpose of performing limited planning functions with respect to the Powder House Connector project in certain portions of unincorporated Aiken County. As we move forward with the second phase of the connector project, we have timelines tied to funding through federal governments, Federal Highways Administration. As part of this process, Aiken County has granted us an agreement to, where they are delegating to us limited planning functions only within the 120-feet right-of-way, which is currently in Aiken County, within the road footprint of the second phase only. So we saw today, the first phase, this would continue that loop out to Old Powder House only within the road right-of-way footprint, not any other property. This would include zoning and other planning functions that would normally be undertaken by county staff and their planning commission, and the county is delegating those to the city planning commission and staff. The reason for that, the necessity for this, is because the county has a lot of items on their plate, and it's first come, first served, and in order to meet any necessary deadlines, if it is under our planning purview, we can treat it with the expedited nature that it deserves, and rest assured it gets done. I'm very appreciative of the county council and staff for, the county administrator actually recommended this to the county council for the reason I stated, and they graciously agreed to. agreed to it, and passed this via three readings, and it is before you now, uh, for this ordinance for first reading, Madam Mayor and Council. And this item would not be on the consent agenda.
Is there a motion for this, please?
So moved.
Councilman Girido made the motion, and I have need a second from Councilman, uh, Councilman Waltz. Uh, any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We now move to petitions and requests. We have one item this evening, and it is approval of a resolution authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into a national opioid settlement agreement. Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you, this is a resolution authorize the city of Aiken, authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into a national opioid settlement agreement with Purdue and the Sackler family. Uh, there is a proposed national opioid settlement agreement that has been reached with Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family. The state of South Carolina generally, and the city of Aiken specifically, is eligible to participate in the settlement. In July, two thousand twenty-five, Iowa sent a document that allows us to participate in this settlement, and it must be executed by the city of Aiken honor before September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Since we do not know how many counties and municipalities will participate, we do not know the amount of money we may receive, but we will receive sixteen payments during the settlement period. We expect those to be sixteen annual or once-a-year payments. City attorney looked at this and said, recommended that we have a resolution with council in order to participate, and, uh, this is a resolution, uh, authorizing us to enter into this settlement agreement, uh, with this class action suit that involves Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I so move.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Second from Councilwoman Broll. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Just wanna know, with this, uh, settlement, what will that money, how can that money be used? Can it be used for general, or what, what is it?
It, it has to be used for opioid-related items, uh, and mitigation, uh, and I have not seen particulars related to this settlement. Once we enter into it, we will be informed by the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund how those monies could be used.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else have any question from the public? Any questions from, any comments from council?
I, I just have a question, do you have any idea of what the to, although we don't know what the sixteen payments will be, any idea of what the total settlement is?
No, I, I did not see that in any of the documents, but, um, from what I saw, just in the national news, the nationwide settlement was in the several billion dollars. Um, so, um, I would imagine South Carolina's settlement is in the millions and millions of dollars.
Okay. Anyone else have any comment? Uh, all those in favor?
I just wanted to add a little, a little bit of information to answer your question.
You asked my question?
No. Um, the state has come up, they have a, a board that basically comes up with abatement strategies, and it's all to mitigate opiate, opiate use disorder. Um, and within the municipality, they've pushed funding now to municipalities and, um, counties and more government, it was going to organizations. Um, and, um, uh, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, but they, their, their goal is to only use it in areas like harm reduction, education, um, and the local clinics that will mitigate that use, to prevent, to prevent overdoses.
Overdoses, so it's pretty much just more scarf money.
It's scarf money, yes.
And, and the, I've, I've been told the national settlement amount is seven point four billion dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's no further comment, I will call for a vote, please. All those in favor? And, God.
Ed, are you in favor?
Yes, it was unanimous, thank you very much. We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Please limit your comments to three minutes per speaker, a total of thirty minutes. Okay, well, we'll move on. Uh, two items from the city manager this evening.
I just have, I just wanna note something in issues and updates, that, um, the economic impact from our parks recreation and tourism for the quarter between April one and June thirtieth is estimated to be about two point three five million, including, uh, five hundred and twenty-five million from a youth baseball tournament in mid-May, uh, and our tennis, USTA Tennis State Tournament in, uh, mid-June, for four days of over six hundred thousand dollars. So, um, you know, the, having these tournaments, uh, are very good, uh, and expose our community to a lot of folks.
Thank you so much.
Kudos to Jessica and her team. Give the round of applause.
Thank you.
She's not here, but kudos to them.
To PRT. Okay, um, we have another executive session. I will now read the notice for this. Uh, on Monday today, August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, after the regular city council meeting, Aiken City Council will go into executive session pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy, parentheses, A, parentheses, one, of the South Carolina Code for the Discussion of Employment, Appointment, Compensation, or Promotion of a Person Regulated by City Council. Specifically, city council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the annual performance review and other related issues of the city manager. Is there a motion to go into exec, this executive session?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price? Councilwoman Broll?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, it is now approved. We will go into executive session.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I missed that. You tell me.
You need my help?
I don't have much technological knowledge at all. Is there a motion to come out of executive session? I have it on.
So moved.
Okay, Councilman, what's your last name? Jeradot made the motion. And a second from Councilwoman Price. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned. We didn't adjourn the meeting.